Called to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a business meeting, Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Knoll?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Here. Okay, may I have a motion to add school speed zone cameras resolution in lieu of bond to this consent agenda and add purchase of property located at 6693 Richmond Road to board considerations.
So moved, that move that those resolutions.
You moved those resolutions, thank you. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye. Okay, we move to presentations, and our first presentation today is citizen recognition of Dr. Jim Horn and Dr. McGlynn's one.
This is a kind of bittersweet moment because we're recognizing the accomplishments of one of our preeminent citizens, Jim Horn, who has been serving as the CEO of the Jamestown Rediscovery Project for the last several years and has already adopted the mode of a retiree, and so we're delighted to have him with us today in order to thank him for what he's done. I have a commendation for the service to the community here, whereas Dr. Jim Horn has dedicated his career to the preservation, research, and education of Jamestown's historical legacy through his exemplary work with the Jamestown Rediscovery Foundation, and whereas Dr. Horn's leadership and expertise have significantly contributed to uncovering and interpreting the earliest English settlement in America, excuse me, enriching our understanding of American history and heritage, and whereas through his commitment to archaeological excellence, public outreach, and educational programming, Dr. Horn has inspired countless individuals and fostered a deeper appreciation for the culture and history important of importance to Jamestown. Whereas Dr. Horn's retirement marks the conclusion of a distinguished career marked by passion, dedicated dedication, and profound impact on both the local community and the broader field of historical archaeology. Now therefore be it resolved that Jim Eisenhower's chair of the Board of Supervisors do hereby commend Dr. Jim Horn for his outstanding contributions to the Jamestown Rediscovery Foundation and the preservation of our shared heritage. Be it further resolved that this commendation be presented to Dr. Horn at a, as a token of gratitude for the relentless, tireless service and lasting legacy, and that the community extends its best wishes for his retirement and future endeavor. In witness whereof, Mr. Eisenhower set his hand and caused the seal of the county of James City, Virginia to be affixed to the, on this day, on the 22nd day of July 2025. Jim, it's hard for us to express how much you've meant for this community and for the broader understanding of such an important part of our legacy, and we do really wish you a great time as you move into retirement.
Thank you, John. Well, thank you very, can you all hear me back there? Can you hear me? Okay, just a few words. First, I'd like to say heartfelt thanks to James City County. James City County has supported our work on Jamestown Island for many, many years, and that support has been critical to the work that we've done there. Now, many of you may know that we're challenged at the moment by climate change and we're desperately seeking funds to support the rescue archaeology that we have to get done in the next five to eight years, and James City County has helped us with that, has come forward to help us, has been a great partner and advocate for that work. Working at Jamestown was without any question the highlight of my career, which spans nearly 50 years now, working as a historian on early Virginia history, and it was a great privilege to serve Jamestown and to serve this community and to serve you all, so thank you very much. I deeply appreciate the honor.
Thank you. I'm gonna pull you down here, I like getting the seal in the background. There we go.
Our next presentation is Waltrip-Williamsburg Executive Airport presentation about the upcoming airshow here in Whidner. Good to see you again, here.
I would have told Dr. Horn that while I've only lived here for 10 and a half years, I'm a regular to his work, so that was really neat to be a part of. I think I know all of you guys, so it's really good to see all of you guys again. I don't know many of you, I'm Karen and I'm the local manager of the local airport. We have a huge event coming up, and I really just wanted to take the opportunity today to, one, put a formal note in front of all of you guys, but also let, remind you that I'm a face and a contact for any questions you guys have or our community has. We're ready to receive all of those. Fifty-five years is what the airport is celebrating. Few of you were at our 54th anniversary last September when we changed the name of the airport, and we made the announcement that we would have an airshow this year. It's the first time the airport has ever done an event like this, and I'm pretty sure it's the first time the community has ever had an event like this. What you can expect is 11 right now contracted aerial performers. The four of these performers are performing right now at the biggest airshow in the world up in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. These are nationally acclaimed, internationally renowned members of the international aerobatics teams, their formation teams, their single airplane performers, their civilian, and we do have a very, very special military guest with a formation team called the Class of 45, which is a Corsair and a P-51 Mustang for anybody that loves old warbirds, and I'm looking at Jim. It's really shaping up to be a fabulous event that will take place on September 20th and 21st. Gates open at 9:00 a.m., we anticipate closing them about 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we're hoping to have 4,000 to 5,000 people out at the airport each day. I would be remiss to not right up front say that James City Fire Department and James City PD have been absolutely amazing and instrumental all the way back from December and January when we began expressing to them the requirements from a federal aviation administrative, the FAA perspective. They're the really big organization that's gonna say yes or no, you can do all of these massive risky events or not, and they levy some very, very high demands on first responders, and JCC has stepped up to the plate and is the first time the local Richmond office has ever received an incident response plan that they had zero recommended changes for. So kudos to our team in the first responder field. Additionally, we have had some great support coming through from York County, from our own JCC EDA, the Hotel Motel Williamsburg Association, Visit Williamsburg is on board, Culture Fix is on board, so we've got a huge team of partners, which leads me into the last group. We've built a committee of about 12 people on the airshow planning committee that are names that you guys all recognize. Heather Harmon is my co-conspirator and planner and has been instrumental in just helping us navigate some of the community ways that I'm not as familiar with at, you know, the county levels, and so it's going to be amazing, it's gonna be a great event for families. It's not just an airshow, there is a huge 80,000 square foot static display area, there is a focused Aero Adventure Kid Zone where kids, I don't wanna call them, I say 2 to 92, can come in and earn a badge at a bunch of different STEM activities to get exposure to all the ways of aviation, and entered into a raffle to win a flight, and then we have many of the performers that can give media rides, dignitary rides, and special incentive rides, and so I'm open to questions from anybody, if that's allowed in the back as well, and from you guys, but I just wanted to give an announcement that the airshow is within two months from today.
Thank you, Karen. And I can guarantee you, you got a P-51 there, I'll be there.
Oh, well, good. It wouldn't be the same without you, Jim.
I'm just glad to know I'm within walking distance.
Yes, yes, that would be key.
I may be walking from his house.
I'll get you guys a shot.
We may all be.
We may all be.
Yeah, but I'm, I think it sounds great, I'm not surprised Heather's in the middle of it, she's in the middle of a lot in this community, but I'm, I think this is really exciting and, yeah, great job.
Thanks, Ruth.
I just think it's great, Karen, because we talked about it before, and you said I'm gonna do this, I said I'm a pilot, I'll do it, just sign me up, if you need me as a volunteer, just sign, call me.
We do, I'm gonna hold you to that. Thank you.
Just let me know, I'm good.
Great, I think it's gonna be wonderful.
It's gonna be fun.
Add a lot to the community and celebrate 55 years, too.
Yeah, it's a big one. Well, thank you guys for your support, and truly, any questions, I think everybody has my phone number and work email, so happy to answer those.
I'm just really pleased that our things, coordination with the county is going so well on this, so I really look forward to it.
Including the permit office, Beth Clapper's absolutely been amazing, sorry, I wanted to give a shout out to her, too. Thank you, then, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Karen.
Yep.
Okay, our next is proclamation for National Night Out on 2025, and I have the proclamation here, and I'm gonna come down, bring it all and come down there.
I brought my team with, well, so.
Okay, this is for, for National Night Out. Okay, proclamation, National Night Out, August 5th, 2025. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 5th of 2025 entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 42nd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for James City County to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts, and whereas the James City County Police Department plays a vital role through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in James City County and is supporting National Night Out in 2025 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens for James City County be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in James City County, and whereas James, whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out program, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby call upon all citizens of James City County to join with the James City County Police Department in supporting the 42nd Annual National Night Out on August 5th, 2025. Be it further resolved that we, the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, as National Night Out in James City County. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the county of James City, Virginia to be affixed this 22nd day of July 2025, and we have that for.
Thank you, sir. Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you.
After we get the picture, I want you to poll the board members about where you wanna have them positioned. If we all, I hope we all want to just radio in.
Should we all come down to the picture?
Yeah, go down. Okay, and the last proclamation is August is National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and we have Brad Reinheimer here on behalf of Chief Ash, who is participating in an exercise. National Emergency Management Awareness Month, August 2025, whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment, and whereas local emergency managers, emergency managers across all sectors, community leaders, state governments, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and U.S. territories, and whereas emergency managers across the U.S. and U.S. territories are charged with establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effectively direct, coordinate, and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts, and whereas mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery align with the core capabilities identified in the National Preparedness Goal, whereas the emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and displays and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism in protecting the public, and whereas the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the U.S. recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, James City County, Virginia, do hereby recognize the month of August as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in conjunction with the National Preparedness Month in September, and in witness whereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of James City County, Virginia, to be affixed this 22nd day of July 2025, and we will pass that on to.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have our consent calendar, and on the consent calendar we have acceptance of funds, $477, Virginia Forfeited Asset Sharing Program, number two, contract award, $155,593, Child Health Initiative Software Management System, contract award, $103,6467, audiovisual media upgrades, equipment, and services. Number four is grant award, $62,928, the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Law Enforcement Equipment Grant. Number five, grant award, $41,030, Commonwealth Attorney, Virginia Domestic Violence Victim Fund. Number six, grant award, $206,865, School Security Officer, Williamsburg, James City County Schools. Number seven, grant award, $195,382, Commonwealth Attorney, Victim Witness Assistance Program. Number eight, minutes adoption. Number nine, resolution of illicit discharge detection and elimination of violation at 8581 Pocahontas Trail, Kings Mill Laundry, and number 10, school speed zone cameras. Anyone who wish to have any one of these pulled, or?
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent calendar.
Yeah, we have a motion for the consent calendar, Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Well, she cares.
Okay, we are now down to our board discussions. Number one is strategic plan update, and I believe you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Back in June, our consultant with Clarion and Associates participated in a podcast on the strategic plan, it's available on our website, to give the public an update on the status of the plan. Since we're not gonna have a public meeting until September, we didn't wanna be out of sight and out of mind for the board, so we've asked the consultant to come before you today to provide that same update, to make sure everybody knows where we are and that there are gonna be additional opportunities to participate, so I'm gonna throw it over to Leigh Anne King to make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Hopefully you can all hear me well, is that, am I coming through?
Very well. Yep.
Great, okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for the opportunity to brief you on the update to the James City County Strategic Plan. So I'm gonna share a little bit of a status update on the project, we're gonna have a little bit of a review of the themes from the public engagement last year, and talk a little bit more about the framework and the unveiling for the plan that will be coming up here in September that Jason just mentioned. So just as a refresher, for those that may be hearing this for the first time, James City County does have an adopted strategic plan, it's the 2035 Strategic Plan that was adopted back in 2016, and this is an update process to renew that plan with four key objectives. The first is to incorporate existing plans and studies and identify the specific initiatives and projects from those that should be incorporated. and projects from those that should be incorporated in the plan. The second was to coordinate the work of the Board of Supervisors, County Administration, and County Departments through this new framework to identify priority capital projects and operational initiatives for investment in the community. And generally speaking, to provide a framework to assess resource allocation ongoing as you all make budget and capital improvement plan decisions year after year. So we are in the fourth phase of our project process here, summer 2025. And we are working on the draft strategic plan now, so we don't have it yet ready to unveil. But again, we're going to be sharing that in September here in just a few months. But we wanted to give you, you know, it's just a little bit of an update on the progress and what to expect here at the unveiling of the plan. So in terms of the first three phases of work, first phase, we completed interviews of the supervisors, department heads, and key county partners. We also assessed the adopted strategic plan to identify what was working well, what needed some improvement, and what projects and initiatives had been undertaken or were still kind of on the table for implementation. And there's a summary report on the county's project website to that effect. In Phase Two, we focused on community engagement. So again, that was that, that fall engagement that was conducted last year. We got some really great community input and I'll share the review of the findings from that. And then most recently, in Phase Three, we prepared an inventory of all the capital projects and initiatives from all the county plans. So really kind of looking at the most recent plans that weren't included in the original strategic plan, looking at ranked priorities for capital projects and operational initiatives, starting to prioritize. And then also did a fiscal check on projects with the technical advisory group. So again, just a refresher on the public engagement findings. So there was a workshop held at Legacy Hall on September 9th. And then following that for the fall, for the next month, there was online engagement. The same activities were provided in both online and in person. We had 180 total individuals that participated. And what we found from their feedback was that they supported all of the existing strategic plan goals. They had the highest support for the sustainable long-term water supply, high-quality education, and exceptional public services. But they did support all the planned goals that were included in the 2035 plan. They did suggest that there should be more emphasis as part of this strategic plan effort to support water quality, schools, housing, and community character. In terms of new proposed strategic plan goals, there was support for three: communication and transparent governance, engagement and retention of county staff, and then attainable housing. There were all concepts that people supported in terms of inclusion at a goal level in the updated strategic plan. We asked them a question about public services that should be prioritized. There are limited resources. And what people responded with was that public safety, community development, and land use planning, public education, and courts and criminal justice were very high on the list in terms of public services to be supporting. But also, there are some other important priorities, which include stormwater management, public transportation, and libraries. So we took all of that information and have made some changes to the draft strategic plan framework. So just as a reminder, kind of how this works in practice, again, you do have a currently adopted strategic plan. As you can see from the process here, this is what we call the cycle of decision-making on resource allocation. So first, the county sets policy priorities through its comprehensive plan and other plans. Then it sets those work priorities for its departments through the strategic plan, which we are updating in this process. That is then used to help set funding priorities through the budget and capital improvement plan. And then once those resources are allocated, then the county goes about implementing those priorities. That in practice, that's kind of how this fits within kind of decision-making on resource allocation for the county. And there, you know, this is seen in practice. You all are very familiar that your annual budget is updated and includes a lot of information and connection to the strategic plan and its guidance and sets that out very distinctly in the annual review and prioritization of capital projects and initiatives included within. So the recommended framework for the plan is to have four kind of key areas: mission and values, guiding principles, goals, and actions. The mission and values are coming from your established mission and values. So the county, we work in partnership with all citizens to achieve a quality community. Your vision, or excuse me, your values are integrity, collaboration, excellence, and stewardship. Those are going to be carried forward within the strategic plan as recommended. And then we have three new guiding principles, that the county is service-focused and aims for a positive customer experience, that it's fiscally efficient and prioritizes fiscal efficiency when balancing decisions regarding operations, investments, and available resources. And then thirdly, transparent communications, that the county achieves transparent governance through clear communications and sharing critical information about the county's efforts and actions within the community. So those are intended to kind of guide in terms of, you know, the key kind of things that you want to be achieving with respect to the strategic plan. So the goals are the intended outcomes of which we have, I believe there are now nine of these. And I will kind of walk through each of the and tell you a little bit more about the each of the goals' connection to the findings from the public engagement and a little bit of a share in terms of how it connects to some of the current investments that you all are making. And in the future plan that we'll be sharing with you, there will be kind of near-term and longer-term capital investment opportunities in terms of the operational initiatives and capital projects that the county can be achieving through these various goals. So I'll walk through each of these. The first here listed is to protect community character and enhance the built environment. And the goal here, very much connected to your comprehensive plan, is to, as it says, James City County's unique historic assets, natural environment, rural character, hometown feel, and attractive developments will be protected and maintained over time. Community corridors and older developed centers and neighborhoods will be enhanced and revitalized. And that is strongly supported through the public engagement that we received last year. So there was guidance about prioritizing protection of community character, as well as community development, land use planning, and stormwater management being important public services to prioritize within the strategic plan. And some kind of current examples of projects and initiatives that are supported through this goal are future investments in open space program, watershed management retrofits, transit stop improvements, Virginia DOT drainage improvements, and transportation match projects such as sidewalk connections and road diet improvements. So it's just a, gives you a flavor for the types of projects that fall underneath that goal. The second goal is to collaborate with James City Service Authority to secure a sustainable long-term water supply. So the goal reads that the county and James City Service Authority will collaborate to provide an adequate potable, long-term water supply that's financially sustainable for the county's current and future community members and businesses. That was very much an important goal that participants in the, in the public engagement said that we want to maintain that goal. And it's a very important focus for the community. In terms of projects and initiatives, JCSA operates as a separate enterprise organization, as you know. And you all, as supervisors, also serve separately on the Board for JCSA and are important partners in guiding the efforts to secure that long-term water supply. The next goal is to deliver exceptional public services. And this goal states that James City County will provide an exceptional quality of life to its community members by focusing on the provision of public services that meet the needs of a changing population. The county will do this by maintaining a safe environment for its community members, improving services to the county's aging population, enhancing parks and recreational offerings, providing effective assistance to the county's underserved populations, improving county communications, and maintaining and modernizing community facilities. So a lot packed into this goal. And in terms of the linkage to engagement findings, this was a priority goal identified by respondents. And public safety and libraries were also identified as important community priorities that fall underneath this goal. And some example projects and initiatives include the new county library, capital maintenance of existing buildings and new facilities, fire and police renovations, expansions and equipment and vehicle fleet upgrades, and parks and recreation improvements and renovations. The next goal is actually a new goal: recruit and retain a skilled workforce. And the intent of this is to consistently deliver high-quality and reliable public services by recruiting and retaining a qualified and skilled county staff team. Recruitment and retention efforts will reduce employee turnover and support consistent public service delivery. So the kind of connecting how the workforce that provides all the services that James City County offers to its residents, creating that connection between that service and the importance of recruitment and retainment of the folks that are providing those services. And this was supported as an additional strategic plan goal. People did support that. And the projects and initiatives will include specific operational initiatives to support recruitment and retention efforts. The next goal is support a growing and diverse local economy. James City County will support the expansion and diversification of the local economy by providing the regulatory framework to support business development. And the county will support and partner on economic development, marketing, and recruitment efforts, and foster the development and expansion of businesses. There was good support for the economic development goal moving forward. It's also in the currently adopted plan. And also important connection to providing exceptional public services because, as you all know, growth in the economy helps create county revenues, which helps support public services. So some example projects and initiatives under this goal are to identify rural economic development opportunities, support partnerships for historic and sports tourism efforts, and partner with William &amp; Mary and Thomas Nelson Community College and other partners to support business recruitment. Another important goal, to collaborate to provide high-quality education. This one states that the county will support high-quality education by focusing primarily on its core fiscal responsibility of funding high-quality public schools through joint facility planning efforts with WJCC and by collaborating on opportunities to support other educational efforts in the county. This was an important priority goal identified by people participating last fall. And they also said that they want to see more investment emphasis on schools. Projects and initiatives examples there are to partner on implementation of the WJCC Strategic Plan, investment in pre-K space, investments in elementary school bus canopy, the design for the Jamestown High School expansion, and major maintenance investments in schools and playgrounds. The next goal is to invest in modern infrastructure and technology systems. The idea here is that the county would undertake strategic investments to modernize infrastructure and technology to enhance the quality of life provided to its community members, address the changing needs of its population, and improve the prospects for growing new business. These investments will be funded using sustainable approaches that will maintain the fiscal health of the county. And again, this relates to the provision of exceptional public services, which was prioritized in terms of the goals to be focusing on. Some example projects are updating software for payroll and real estate assessment for the county. And then I believe the last goal that we have here is preserve and support the development of attainable housing. So this goal states that the county will support the development of housing that is adequate for all households to meet their needs. James City County will support strategies to facilitate the development of affordable housing for seniors, special needs populations, and to address homelessness. And there was support for adding this new attainable housing goal to the strategic plan. And they identified affordable housing as an important priority for the community. Some example projects and initiatives included here are the support for adaptive reuse of old commercial buildings to new housing, investigating funding resources to support adaptive reuse of existing businesses or other uses, and to explore the idea of a community land trust and/or other public-private partnerships to support this goal. So that concludes the goals and the relationship to the public engagement, some of the example projects and initiatives. Now I'm just going to share a little bit about the upcoming plan unveil. So like I mentioned, we're hard at work right now putting the strategic plan together, and we will be sharing that draft plan with the community. You encourage everyone to save the date for September 29th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Legacy Hall. There will be a workshop. There will be online activities that will follow that workshop. So if that date doesn't work for folks, there will be an opportunity to provide their input on the draft strategic plan. So the purpose of that workshop and the online engagement is to share the full draft of the plan with residents, give them an opportunity to provide feedback on the guiding principles and goals. They can rank priorities among the various implementation projects and initiatives, and they can provide feedback on other projects or initiatives that they would like to be supported in the future. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Questions for Ms. King?
Lot to digest.
Yes.
I did have a question about whether, and not really for you, but for our staff, about whether this presentation is now available online.
It will be. Whether it is by this afternoon, we ought to have it uploaded to your agenda so it would be there as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would have been helpful to have received this prior to this presentation since it's sometimes hard to ask questions on the fly afterwards. But I do appreciate the strategic plan update. I do wonder if it's, it seems like a lot in length. So just hopefully, and part of the reason for the comment is that we've just gotten back from a conference where they talked a lot about strategic plans and making sure that you don't make them too large so that you cannot get to where you, you know, making sure that you are accomplishing something. And so I want to, I mean, there's great goals in there. There's a lot of good stuff. Just, I want to make sure we're able to address it and zero our policies and our agendas back to those things. So, but I appreciate, I do appreciate the update very much.
And if I could just add a couple of, a couple of points. One is a question about whether the strategic plan that was adopted earlier has now a kind of, as we're concluding that strategic plan, a kind of outcomes that allow us to see.
Did we do those?
Yeah. Was it effective? Were we on target? Where did we find ourselves moving in other directions as change occurred and so forth? And the other thing that I think is important for us, after, after your presentation a little later on in our agenda, we have a presentation about resiliency plan. And we have a comprehensive plan. And we have watershed plans. And we have a cultural asset, cultural and natural asset plan. And I think one of the challenges that we, that we face certainly, and that citizens who want to really explore this material faces, where they overlap, where they complement each other, where they differ from one another. So I think that that's something we're going to have to wrestle with over the course of the next several months.
I thought the same thing about the resilience, resiliency. When I saw that was on the agenda today as well, so.
And if it's okay, I did want to just mention that, and I can't speak specifically to the resiliency plan because it sounds like that's maybe a new plan that's under development currently. Is that, am I accurate about that?
And it's not just about us. It's, it involves our
It's a regional plan?
Yes.
Okay. So the, in terms of other plans, the intent when we started this effort was to update the 2016, the 2035 strategic plan that was updated in 2016, and to pick up any adopted plans that were taken up by the county after 2016 so that the new strategic plan is more current. And effectively, what the strategic plan does is it, it identifies all the various kind of action items that require some level of investment or staff time to be implementing. And it helps to prioritize those so that when you all so that when you all are making your decisions on an annual basis, looking at your budget and your CIP, you have some guidance through the strategic plan about what you all might want to be supporting in a given year. And it's flexible knowing that the resources available in a given year are not always the same year to year. So it does try to create an opportunity to incorporate all those other plans and give you some guidance about how to go about implementing the specifics to do's that are included within them.
And I'll just add one other thing. And that is I appreciate the consistency that you bring to this because of the fact that you've been involved in this process with James City County for a long time. You almost feel like a citizen of the community.
I do feel like one. Thanks.
Well, I'm sure you feel like one. We're ready to, you know, encourage you to pay your personal property taxes here and real estate taxes. But thanks very much for what you presented today.
Sure.
And I did want to just take one minute to address the two comments. One about plan length and then one just making sure that we're checking up on things. One of the things that we initially wanted to do with the strategic plan back in 2017 was really identify things that we knew needed to happen that didn't necessarily have prices associated with them that first time, all sort of the backlog of CIP. What we found was the plan having so many linkages to our budget document meant that some of our staff didn't feel the connection to the strategic plan, right? They really wanted to have something that was a little more of like ownership in it, right? Which is why I think in working with Leanne, I think she's tired of hearing me say it, we really want to have these things that are more guiding principles, right? Like that we've tried to incorporate new aspects of the plan to make sure that during the budgeting process, during the onboarding, we can really have all of our staff feel that connection. So we didn't want it to necessarily just be about, hey, we're checking boxes and getting things accomplished. So we've really tried to make a concerted effort to include those things this time, which also leads into making sure that we have something that's easily digestible. Leanne is absolutely going to be working on documents that are even shorter than the overall plan, right? So I think the first strategic plan was 35, 36 pages. We would love to have one that just have the goals on there, right? And the principle, guiding principles and the mission vision values, a card that everybody can carry around or that we can post in workplaces. Because that connection to the strategic plan, you can see it in the budget documents. You can see it in all the work that we're doing. So absolutely take those points to heart. And those are issues that I think staff is struggling with as well. But we're lucky to have Leanne helping us untangle that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Leanne. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And we will now move to our next presentation. A presentation on resilience, adaptation feasibility tool for the Historic Triangle localities, Tammy Rosario.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Since January, a team from the University of Virginia, Old Dominion University, and Virginia Tech have been working with staff from James City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg to apply the resilience adaptation feasibility tool, also known as RAFT, to the Historic Triangle. The goal of the RAFT is to help Virginia's localities and tribal nations increase their ability to respond to acute and chronic hazards and stressors while also strengthening its economic and social viability. And it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Wendy Stout and Elizabeth Andrews, who will present information about this tool, James City County's assessment, upcoming opportunities, and next steps. At the end of the presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I'll be glad. I'm sorry. I do have a soft voice. So I'm Dr. Wendy Stout, the Coastal Director at Virginia Tech. And it is my pleasure to share with you about the RAFT and the efforts that we've done in the Historic Triangle. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with Tammy and her team. And it has just been a wonderful experience. And so she shared about the RAFT, so I'm not going to read what's here. But I just want to clarify one point, that it is not a plan. The RAFT is a framework. It's a tool. And it is used to strengthen community resilience. And so it feeds into the opportunities that we develop, the opportunity list that we develop out of the RAFT and the resilience action checklist, which you'll hear about later, can be used to help make decisions on other plans that you have. And we do review other plans, such as the capital improvement plan and the comprehensive plan and strategic plan in our process. But it's not a plan in itself, and the outcome is not a plan. So I wanted to have that clarification. You'll hear more about that. But the really important thing that I want to share with you today is that RAFT is a grassroots roots effort that works with localities. We engage stakeholders and community members in a community-driven process. And we have been really honored to work in the Historic Triangle and specifically with James City County in this process. And as Tammy shared with you, we are a three-university collaborative. And it's my distinct pleasure, I know that oftentimes you don't hear about good examples of universities working well together and having a wonderful experience. But we truly do, and we are very blessed to have such a strong team and a strong partnership. So I'd like to recognize some of our staff members that are here today. And in the spirit of collaboration, we're also going to have a collaborative presentation where teammates from each of the universities will share part of the presentation. And so first of all, you were introduced by Tammy with my colleague, Elizabeth Andrews, who is a distinguished law and policy fellow at the Institute for Engagement and Negotiation. Also, Tanya Deklicob, the director there, is one of our leaders for the ODU team. Jessica Whitehead, who's not here, is the executive director of the Institute for Coastal Adaptation and Resilience. And we have her teammate here, Trang Lee, who is assistant research professor. And then myself, I'm the lead for the Virginia Tech team. And then here as well with my team, we have Michael Manchester. And she's the program manager. She's also a community develop and water quality specialist. And Apari Sakbari, who is a Coastal Resilience intern, but she's also a PhD candidate at Virginia Tech in policy, public policy. And she's not here with us today. But we really have a really strong team. And it has been a great opportunity for us to work with you all in James City County. So I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth. And she's going to share about the history of the RAFT and the process.
Thank you, Wendy, and thank you all for having us this afternoon. So the RAFT, the resilience adaptation feasibility tool, it's a little contorted, but it made the RAFT, so we went with it. It's a program that's been successfully administered for a decade now. Tanya Deklicob at UVA and I started it together when I was at William &amp; Mary Law School and the faculty there. I'm now at UVA. And Virginia Tech joined us as a third partner along with ODU. We started out on the eastern shore of Virginia and worked with that region. And I want to note that we always partner with the Planning District Commission when we do the RAFT because they know their localities, they know the risks, the vulnerabilities. So in working with the Historic Triangle localities now, we're partnering with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. After the eastern shore, we went to the northern neck when that little thing called the pandemic hit. And so everything went online on Zoom. We adjusted the process. And then we went to the middle peninsula. Then we worked with Hopewell and Petersburg, and now the Historic Triangle and two localities in southwest Virginia. We also have worked with two tribes in Virginia and are currently working with two more. The RAFT is a three-step process. And one thing that I want to back up and point out, all right, I'm going to take a risk and try to back up. There we go. Look at that. All right. Thanks to Tammy, I knew how to do that. The goal of the RAFT covers environmental, economic, and social resilience. It's a very broad definition of resilience that we use, a very broad concept. And so when we do this program, we focus on all three areas. We first start with a quantitative assessment, a scorecard that we've specially developed for the purpose, where we look at a locality's programs and policies and ordinances to see how much resilience is incorporated. And we also do a qualitative assessment. And my colleague from UVA, Meredith Keppel, will be presenting the slide about that because she conducted the qualitative assessment and spoke to many people in the community. After that, we hold a regional workshop in partnership with the PDC. And we invite members of the community to come. We split into small groups by locality. And we ask the representatives of each locality to develop a checklist of things to work on for a year to increase resilience. We call it the resilience action checklist. And then the part that no one can believe is that we actually stick around for a year to help make that happen. So we divide the localities amongst the three partner universities. And we hold, we host, and we facilitate monthly implementation team meetings with representatives of each locality to work our way through the list. And we try to bring to the table the resources that would help, whether it's a state agency or a nonprofit. For example, in the northern neck, there was great concern about flooding and inundation of septic systems. So we brought the Department of Health to the table, and they met with the implementation team every month. We also brought the DC, the Department of Conservation and Recreation Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service in because they had a lot of roding shorelines. So we try to custom tailor it to whatever is needed by each community. So splitting it down, there's the quantitative or scorecard assessment and the qualitative, which is focus groups and interviews. And during the quantitative assessment, we look at comprehensive plans, hazard mitigation plans, you know, that was the question. There's so many plans. Well, we look at all of those when we're scoring to try to look at how much is resilience incorporated. These are the categories of the scorecard, planning for resilience and community engagement, health and wellbeing, policy, leadership and collaboration, risk assessment and emergency management, and infrastructure resilience. I will say, community engagement, health, and wellbeing is often the category that localities score lowest on. It's a little bit harder to get your hands around that and tie it to resilience. And so that's one of our focuses. I'm going to hand it to Meredith now to talk about the qualitative assessment.
Hello. Some of your faces are familiar from this room. I did this qualitative assessment in the spring of this year and interviewed Dr. McGlenon, as well as several of your staff, who were excellent. James City County has participated in excess, I would even say. You know, this, it's astounding participation. We had 52 participants in this process, either whether it was through interviews or surveys or a focus group, which actually Mr. Stevens also participated. So we had a lovely, lovely showing. And what we took from those 52 participants across the region was we coded their answers and their responses to 10 questions. And we came up with these four themes. And I actually appreciated that strategic plan update in front of me because it reiterates to me that this was right, that this was what the community wanted to talk about. They wanted to talk about the service orientedness of their community. They wanted to say that, you know, they have volunteerism and philanthropy at a level that they don't see other places in the state. They want to talk about the economic disparities. They especially wanted to identify that the historic and cultural preservation options and values, assets of this region were things that they valued and prided themselves in, but that brought a tourism industry that created wage gaps. And that wage gap then led to access and affordability issues. The affordability of housing was a huge one, but also the access to medical services for certain areas, whether it be because of transit issues, also issues of access to parks, which I know has been identified in James City County as well. Certain neighborhoods were identified specifically by, in the qualitative report. You can read it. There's specific neighborhoods throughout the region that were identified, called out by name, as really struggling with access and affordability. And then we talked about demographic shifts and that there's a kind of pro and con to the demographic shifts, that there's a growing retirement community in the region. But that also brought with it the need for providers, for folks who were able to provide in-home care and/or retirement community care and medical care. And that also provided its own challenges. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Wendy Stout. I went the wrong direction.
Thank you so much, Meredith. Thank you. So what you see here is the scorecard results from that qualitative assessment that Meredith was sharing with you. And a lot of the outputs for this will be very helpful. Congratulations to James City County for being selected by DCR to, through the Community Flood Preparedness Fund, to do a resilience plan. And I think that this, the outcomes from the scorecard could be helpful in that. So James City County, in these categories, which were the categories that we did assessment on, came up with a score of 89 out of 113, or 79% of the total applicable metrics. And so what that means, the takeaways from that is that James City County's overall score of 79% falls between York, which got 81%, and Williamsburg at 74%, which is all excellent. It's very good. And so the categories that you saw on the previous slide, the lowest of those categories was the score for community engagement, health, and wellbeing. The highest category score was for risk assessment and emergency management and planning for resilience, which obviously you all are planning for with the upcoming resilience plan. Based on the scorecard interpretation metrics, James City County, we feel, is very well-prepared with over 75% resilience indicating a very high resiliency. That does not always happen with a lot of the localities that we've done this RAFT work with. So you could, you know, consider that you all are doing very well in that regard. And one of the things that I wanted to mention is that we found, as we went through this process with Tammy and her team, that a lot of the things that James City County is doing are not always identified as resilience, even though they are resilience. And so you all have not necessarily had the communication that something is a resilience action when in fact it does do very well with resilience. And so that was a really opening experience to see the high level of resilience that's not necessarily branded that way. So I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Trang Lee, to share about the workshop.
Good afternoon. It's my honor to be here today. So after the scorecard and the qualitative and quantitative assessment, the second step of the RAFT is the committee workshop. The goal of the workshop is to have to set up three to five priorities by the committees. Our previous committee workshop had participation from various stakeholders, federal, state agency, local government, busy need NGO, the committee leaders, as well as the local residents. So for the Historic Triangle, our committee resiliency workshop is scheduled for Monday, August 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at James City County Recreation Centers. And we need your voice. And the workshop will be open to all who live and work in Williamsburg, York County, and James City Counties. So everyone in the historical triangle. We need your voice. And please feel free to join our workshop and register using the QR code here or by using the URL provided on the screen. So now I will hand over to Dr. Stout.
So we really hope that everyone here will consider attending. We would love to have your voice at the workshop. And everyone's voice is important in a community-driven grassroots effort like this. So key opportunities, these are things that came out of the opportunity list after the assessment for the qualitative and quantitative assessments. And the two that were identified by the local government staff as being the must-dos, the things that must happen, are to establish resilience coordination, team and training program to align efforts with relevant resilient staff and community engagement to provide opportunities for residents to map lived experiences and target vulnerable neighbors to hear about their needs and their ideas. And so we worked closely with Tammy and many members of the local government staff here to come up with these two must-dos. We also came up with an expanded version of this list that included 10 opportunities, which we call the opportunity list. And these top 10 were things that were identified by the staff as things that were gaps in the resilience effort and things that could be done to improve resilience in James City County. And so I'm not going to go through all of these because we don't, we have a limited time on the slot. But I encourage you to read through these in your version. I would like to also mention that when we develop the resilience action checklist, we will also include the community at the workshop. And so we will share the things that were developed by the local government staff. But we will also get input from the community discussions at the workshop. And the resilience action checklist, it will truly be a community-led process where the remaining items for the resilience action checklist that we'll work on for the entire year and those monthly meetings that we discussed earlier, those will be chosen after that community workshop as a result of that and will have the input from the local government staff and the community. And so it'll be a combination. And we really look forward to the implementation process. As Elizabeth shared with you, we have a three-university collaboration. So we have lots of opportunities to bring experts to bear from all three universities, as well as from local government officials and from state government programs. Grant opportunities will look at different, you know, Grant opportunities will look at different, you know, you know, foundations. We'll look at all kinds of different opportunities to be able to fund this work and to make this work happen and work with the community and the locality to, to implement as we move forward for the next year. So with that, does anyone have any questions for us? And I'd like to invite Elizabeth to come up to help answer questions.
Questions from the board.
Could you talk a little bit about, more about the 18th? What exactly are you, you don't want people there, you don't expect people to stay for three hours, I take it. You're, they're going to come, give some input, move through.
Actually, we have a set process for these regional workshops. And we do want them to stay for a while. We're kicking it off with a presentation by Dr. Molly Mitchell from VIMS to talk about predicted flooding impacts in the region. She's helped us out with a number of workshops, Northern Neck, Middle Peninsula. And then we talk about the scorecard process and the results. We split into the small groups by locality and then we facilitate a discussion with each locality. Virginia Tech is leading the way with James City County. UVA is working with Williamsburg and ODU is working with York County. And we come up through that process, the community develops their list of resilience actions they want to undertake. So it is a step-by-step process through that. I will add that on the opportunity list, when we started on the eastern shore, that was the first region that we worked with, we went into the workshop and we said, what do you want to work on for the coming year to become more resilient? And there's a moment of silence because people don't really know where to start with that question. So we said, we really need to trigger the conversation. So we started developing an opportunity list where we look at things that are already developed in the comprehensive plan, things that are already listed in the capital improvement plan and in the hazard mitigation plan. And these are suggested things and also looking at the scorecard, of course, and where the locality may have scored lower, that's an opportunity. We've started now asking the locality staff for their input because they know what's going on in their community. And that's where that list of 10 items on the list that Wendy showed came from, was the county staff. And we told them the top two priorities, we will make sure those end up on the checklist. After that, the community, they can go off and decide to do something completely not on the opportunity list, of course. And there was one community in the Middle Peninsula that said, we really wanted a community garden for years. Can you help us to develop that for more food security in this rural area? And so we helped them with that. That wasn't anywhere on any comp plan, capital improvement plan, hazard mitigation plan, any list. So the community can choose whatever they want, but it's to trigger conversation, to try to facilitate.
I think that's great. The only thing I worry about is if you're a family that has young children or children at all coming on August 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 is, is tough. I, I think you're going to hear from a population that you've already talked about in here that where there's a need and everyone has a voice. So I'm, I'm just hoping there's, you know, are we looking at providing childcare? Or what are we doing to facilitate to make sure that we can get additional voices in there?
Absolutely. And I will say, that's a line we have to walk every time because you hear from people that work that they want to come after work. And you hear from people that have kids that they want to come during the day more. And so it's, that's actually why we picked this kind of odd time of 4:00 to 7:00 was to dollop over both, but I'll let Meredith.
Okay, thank you.
We, we are looking at providing childcare. We have done outreach, we're not licensed to provide childcare and that's a big hurdle for us. But we have done outreach to a number of churches in the area asking, you know, if we provided a small amount stipend or something, could they use some of their staff? Could we do it in the rec center? Could we do it at a nearby church? If you have a contact with any of the churches around, anyone that might be willing to help with that, we are absolutely looking for that.
We have an after-school camp program through the rec center. Perhaps we might be able to help with that as well.
That would be awesome. We would, we would love that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the, I mean, I, again, I think it's great. And we, we come back again, people think we ought to meet later than we do, so I understand that. It's just that, that type of time commitment, I want hopefully everyone to be able to have a chance to participate.
We really appreciate you raising that because you have to be cognizant of that. Thank you. That's wonderful.
I look forward to it.
Any questions? Just one, one question about, if you could reflect for a minute about the three jurisdictions you're working with. Are you finding areas of comparability across all three and areas of differences? And is any way you can highlight any of that?
Well, one thing obviously is that affordable housing, I think, is an issue in, in general. But it's exacerbated in an area where folks that may be in wage jobs can't afford to live close into their job. So that is one area that we've seen. Another thing on the positive side that came through the qualitative assessment that Meredith talked about is the strong nonprofit community in the area, service community, that, that seems to echo throughout as well. Did you want to add anything to that, Meredith?
I, I think we found in several, several commonalities. I, I talked about some of them within the qualitative report. But if you look at the qualitative reports, which I'm sure Tammy can help provide a link to, there are often also a section where it's broken out by locality, the responses by folks who were associated with an individual locality versus the whole region. Some of the things that we saw were, that were a little different was folks who were also focused on stormwater and flooding tended to be from James City County. Folks who were experiencing issues with septic and/or not having access to wastewater, centralized wastewater infrastructure also tended to be in the county, James City County. And, and there were a couple other issues of access and affordability that, that crossed some boundaries that tended to be towards the southern end of the city that were kind of in that tri-area and, and crossed boundaries, but were especially exacerbated in that area.
And I was pleased to notice that the number three on your list there talked about using the PDC maps and, and new rainfall predictions and flood zones. I think that's something that we're all aware of that needs to be incorporated into our ordinance and stuff because we've got the history of places that were built before any of these came along that are repeatedly constantly in, in flood issues. So I think that's one of the things we have to put top of the list for us to, to look at because that's coming, so.
And I will notice, Emma Cormet is here from Hampton Roads, Plante District Commission. Ben McFarland couldn't make it, but he sent his, his best.
And I know that they oftentimes talk about best available data. And so that's something that is very important when you're making those considerations and those maps.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions? Appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Okay, the next is Distribution Centers Economic Development, Christopher Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Mr. Johnson's coming forward. This really, his presentation today came out of a question about neighboring localities and some announcements there and distribution centers and why not us? And so Chris has pointed out, we do have some distribution centers, but he thought he'd take an opportunity to talk a little more about economic development and what we're doing and see what other kind of questions you might have with him. So, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will briefly just talk about economic development in general, a little bit about how the state process goes for projects, how they're considered, and then try to highlight some of the recent wins we've had here in James City County. The question that is often raised is, you know, what is economic development? And if I were to poll the five of you and anybody in this audience, chances are we would get different answers from everybody here. So that's both good and bad. But here in James City County, we're home to a robust manufacturing industry that we've had for over 50 years. And economic diversification, as you heard during the presentation on the strategic plan, is not just an aspirational goal, it is something that we have embraced wholeheartedly during those 50 years and helped our community maintain a stable source of family sustaining wage employment opportunities, balanced our tax base and kept our economy strong through both recessions and the pandemic. Adjacent localities such as the city of Williamsburg and York County are more heavily reliant on tourism and hospitality to help balance their tax rate and lack industrial sites and buildings that make them attractive and of interest to companies looking to expand into the US market or expand to be closer to a military installation of the Port of Virginia. The reason citizens choose to live in our community that we all know, quality education, award-winning parks and recreation and access to employment are the same attributes that companies look for when we're to look for for expansion opportunities, both domestic and international. Our Office of Economic Development Team may not be as large as some of our neighboring jurisdictions, but we compete above our weight class and continue to diversify our tax base with quality business attraction, retention and expansion efforts and utilize our partner organizations to supplement the range of services that we offer. As we know, Virginia has 133 counties and cities and competitiveness has never been stronger than it is amongst states these days for projects and wins. When projects come into the state through site selectors, they generally submit a list of top 10 or 15 criteria that they are looking for. And quite simply, when those projects come in at the state, they're distributed to the 17 regional economic development organizations throughout the state. Ours is the Hampton Roads Alliance. They are then distributed out to localities who have buildings or sites which meet the entirety of the 10 or 15 requirements that a company is looking for. So when the question was originally asked, highlighting some things that were in the news of some recent wins in Prince George and New Kent for distribution centers, the answer to that question was those projects never made it to James City County because we didn't have a building or a site big enough or ready soon enough to be considered for those projects. You know, that may seem, okay, that's bad. We didn't get considered. We didn't win those. But there are others that we are very competitive with, given our access on the mid-Atlantic to the Port of Virginia and to the 19 military installations throughout Hampton Roads. More often than not, we have available sites here in James City that are at least under consideration, allows staff to submit a request for proposal and a request for information. Oftentimes with, they give you 24 hours to do it and that's a fun little dance to do. But we do fill out every one of those that we can to be as competitive on any project. And chances are, there is some subjectivity to that and we do have ample discussions with county administration when we see a project that is questionable, that we might qualify for the criteria, but it may not be in an industry or may have various offerings or byproducts of the business that would not be desirous for our community. And on those cases, they may offer lower wages or, or those sort of reasons that would cause us to say that we are going to choose not to be competitive on that particular project for those reasons. But by and large, we are competitive with everything we can possibly do. Some recent wins to highlight, which surely should come is, is no surprise to all of you because you were involved in those processes. Norwegian-based Kongsberg Defense and Aerospace announced last September a $100 million investment in James City County and over 180 wage sustaining jobs. Just prior to the pandemic, South Korean-based Katie Navian announced a, what was then a $70 million project with 180 jobs. The pandemic put an immediate stop to that project, but the good news is they have come back. They've engaged on the property they own on the Stonehouse Commerce Park and their engineers are actively working towards their originally planned 1 million square foot addition, addition to take them closer to 1 million square feet on that property. And the capital investment that was originally 70 million, I don't have an exact figure, but you can easily do some math and, and say if that was six years ago and it was 70 million then, with what it costs to construct these days, it's probably up north of 100 million right now. That still has to go back through and be re-approved by the state, but surely when that happens, you all will be amongst the first to know. Some other projects that you have seen in some portion, Owens, Illinois, OI, in the Hankins Industrial Park, we came forward with the first phase several years ago of what is a recapitalization and of some of their internal machinery. They discussed at that time, while it was a six and a half million dollar investment in replacing some parts, it was part of a larger plan to invest up to $60 million here at the James City County facility. And when you have as many sites as OI has nationally, when corporate affairs decides that they're going to invest tens of millions of dollars in a facility, that's great news for the locality, that's great news for the area and great news for the Commonwealth. Ball Metal has made several multimillion dollar investments, most recently in adding a nitrous widget to their canning line that allows them to put nitrous capsules at the bottom of the aluminum cans that they form and form soda that has a resemblance to a fountain-based drink or various beverages that need that pop and that foam that comes out to a nice frothy head on certain beverages. They now have the ability to do that here and they're one of only three lines at any of their facilities in the United States that can do that. The Lovett 64 Commerce Center, formerly Hazelwood Enterprise Center off of Exit 227, is a 328 acre industrial park capable of housing 2.23 million square feet of industrial space. And the first tenant is scheduled for a groundbreaking at that facility later this year. The Greenmount Logistics Center down in lower James City County in Greenmount is a 374,000 square feet distribution logistics center that has signed its first tenant a lease for 150,000 square feet of that building and they're anticipating an announcement later this year because it still remains, they're still in the formative stages with the state of determining whether they qualify for some job-based creation incentives. On a smaller scale, but certainly no less important, a homegrown business such as Oceans and Ale has doubled their seating capacity and stayed in James City County when they had originally explored, when their lease was up at their site on a full-town road, they had explored and they purchased property in the city of Williamsburg and just happened to make some connections and connect them through to the broker who represented the former Ruby Tuesday site at Monticello Marketplace. One thing led to another, conversation started and they just had their groundbreaking, or their ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago and are doing fantastic business. And it's always exciting to see someone be rewarded for their faith and, and investment in James City County. And I think they're going to continue to do extremely well at that site. An event venue, the main at Williamsburg that we've seen for our Celebration of Business event for the last three years is now in year four, having hosted over 300 events and over 50,000 guests. And as we all know, Busch Gardens is celebrating their 50th year this year and is a foundational, to call it an investment opportunity, I mean, an economic engine that is Busch Gardens continues to have ramifications and, and the county has been the beneficiary of those for many, many decades and hopefully many decades to come. Very briefly, the Greenmount Industrial Park, James River Commerce Center, Stonehouse Commerce Park and Hankins Industrial Park are all near their capacity. The available sites they have in there have been purchased, some are under development, some have come forward for various legislative permits down in Greenmount recently. And when those sites are gone, when you do not have sites, it's tough to be competitive. So bringing things like the Lovett 64 Commerce Center and having other areas identified in our comprehensive plan to look into the future, into decades, to see other areas that could potentially be developed for economic industrial purposes is a good thing to have. With that, that's all I have to say, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions any of you have. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Johnson?
Well, I was the person that asked the question because it's, it's not, it's not a criticism, it's a frustration because why would people not want to come here? You know, I think that James City County has so much to offer. And so when I see New Kent getting a Buc-Ee's and a Target Distribution Center, I get frustrated. By the way, if New Kent had only signed on the 64 expansion at the very beginning, we would not be dealing with the traffic that we are now dealing with. Thank you to James City County for doing that from the very beginning. So I really appreciate the explanation and I am aware that we have had several wins and I, I do appreciate that. But I do, I do thank you for talking about the role that, the layers that have to go through in order to get a project here. It's not just, let's go out and put a bid in. It has to go through several other different opportunity acts or, uh, different opportunities than, than just us. And so I appreciate all that you and Beth do for two people and, and departments that are much larger and other communities that surround us. I thank you for, for what you have done and also for the presentation today.
Thank you.
But just a reminder, James City County is a great place to do business. So those that don't have to go through all of those hoops, I hope they will continue to invest here. And I have to also back up what you said about Oceans and Ale. I went on Sunday night and waited an hour for a table. It was well worth it and I was willing to do that. But I'm thrilled that they are where they are. So, thanks.
Thank you. You can make reservations there, which I did on Friday night, so.
I don't know that you can. Somebody told me you couldn't on Saturdays and Sundays.
Maybe not, maybe not on Saturdays. And, and I think one of the, the interesting things to note is that, you know, our community is one that really prides itself on the restoration, the maintenance of a kind of community character. that really suggests the historical, environmental values and so forth. And as a result, what we've planned deliberately over the decades, really, and I give credit to previous boards for much of this, is that we have economic opportunity, opportunities in parks that are shielded from the public in a lot of ways. And I think people don't recognize the fact that we have, for instance, businesses like La Tienda, which is an international, internationally-known company, Core Six, which is responsible for cutting-edge specialty glass that accompanies rockets to the, to the moon, or sometimes not quite that far.
On every Starlink satellite.
But the glass performs very well. And, and the fact that companies like Inbev invest in a modernization of their equipment that brings us additional value to those communities. You know, we can't control everything, such as the decisions that property owners will make, the nature of the market and so forth. And we, yet we do have, I know in, in, in the Roberts District, about three million square feet of distribution center for both Haynes Furniture and, and Walmart.
Haynes and, Haynes is a little over three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and Walmart and Sam's Club share the three million square feet, making them the largest user of the Port of Virginia.
Yeah, so, so I think it would be interesting to take a look at the relative share of the county's budget that is directly benefiting from economic development, take a look at that. And even, even our small airport, which we see is going to be having a great anniversary presentation in September, all of this is really an indicator that we have a good balance in terms of the residential aspects of the community, the efforts to protect open space and retain as much as we can of the community character, and the appropriate role that economic development plays. So thank you very much for the work that you've done, for the staff's work. I was pleased to help cut that ribbon and note that we had a restaurant expanding its location with the redesign of that facility coming from a local business as well, so all good.
Mr. Johnson, I think, I think a lot of the frustration with people that live here, because I hear it all the time, especially with Stonehouse, is that they don't know what's going on, and they don't know the process that you just explained, and I don't know how we get that out to them, that Buc-Ee's is not coming here because we didn't have the property, you know, or they didn't come to you through that process because we didn't have the size they needed. And I think people kind of need to know how the process works, just in plain English, you know, how, how people decide where they're going. I mean, I've had complaints about, about Starbucks being next to the other coffee shop, and I said, you can't tell people what they can do on their property, that's their private property and it's their own business, and they can do that. And I think that a lot of the frustration that people have here, especially in Stonehouse, with nasty letters I get saying, you know, we don't, we need, we need a grocery store up here, we need a bank, we need this, we need that, why isn't it coming? Well, we don't have the land listed, it's not ours to sell, you know, and so they kind of don't understand why things don't work the way they want them to right up front. And I think maybe, I don't know what you could do about it, or what we could put out, or something we could put out, just say, the economic development timeline, you know, certain ones come to us and certain ones don't come to us because we don't have the facilities. I think just people need to be more.
Have you done a podcast with Renee?
Good. And?
There you go.
Do a podcast.
Her podcasts are most informative.
Yeah, they are, and.
You'd be more than happy to, and I understand your point, we get the questions probably almost as many as you do.
I know.
For folks who ask those questions and want to know why and when and how and what.
I send them all to Paul.
And we get that, we understand it, and we do our best to answer each one of those and, and give the answers that we can. There's some times where it's not fair of us, even if we know an answer, to speak for another locality as to what their particularly elected officials may have or have not done to help in an attraction process. I know on just a couple of examples, it's just a matter of not meeting the RFI requirements. With Lego in particular, they had to be located within twenty-five miles of their existing manufacturing site, draw a ring, you're outside of that, you know, it, it didn't happen.
Well, I think people would like to know that.
You know, other things that happen along the corridor in Sixty-four, Eighty-One, you know, Ninety-five, Eighty-five, that want to be within a certain number of miles of an interchange off-ramp, you know, whether they're commercial in nature or industrial in nature, it, it's all driven by access and proximity. What we've seen with the expansion of Sixty-four and the three-laning all the way, when we get done with the project in New Kent, all the way up to Bottoms Bridge in Two-Ninety-Five is the advantages and the, in the, the expertise that the Port of Virginia offers and offering very remarkable turn times and an automated process can take a container off a ship, load it onto a truck, and have it anywhere northwest and south within an hour. When you see comparable facilities in the West Coast that are talking weeks and months sometimes before they can get a single container shipped out. So there are a lot of advantages, the depth of the port, I could go on for, you know, an hour about that, but I won't. But, but certainly, we understand those questions are asked, and we get that, and we see it on a smaller scale, I'll turn it on a positive note, in the fall each year when we do manufacturing tours for our high school students at three-area high schools and take them out and expose them to many of these manufacturers and industries, and we hear the same things every year, I never knew this was here, I never knew there was an opportunity where I could get a trade skill at the, the Community College Trade Center in Hankins and potentially be able to be working at one of these facilities within six to eight months, if they choose not to go the academic route or another route. And, and a lot of that is because of, you know, the practices of the board and the press and good comp planning, good zoning of properly placing uses where they are, where they should be located and not placing things that create nuisances, right, abutting something that would be less desirable.
Well, I think we discussed at that one EDA meeting with the gentleman from the college, and I said, people don't know that we have that place at the industrial park, this is really sad. I mean, it needs to get out, and it needs to be an article in the paper, whatever, you know, do you want to be a welder? Do you want to be a plumber making two-hundred thousand dollars a year? Do you, or do you think about that? Well, we have a school here that can teach that, but everybody's, well, I didn't know about that. And so that we've got to, I think, try to educate the people a little more, and just like the people in my district, oh yeah, we're going to get a Wegmans at Colonial Heritage. I said, really? I said, they're, they're in the business to make money, they look at the bottom line, they're not going to do that because you would like that, and you need to understand how things work. We don't have the numbers. If you don't have the numbers, you don't have the people, you don't have the business.
Free market.
So I think it's a free market, you know, or why did you let that man sell cars at his lot up there in Tohono? Because he has every right to, you know, and so they don't understand that, and that's what you get every day, that's what I get every day, that's what Paul gets every day, and that's what we all get.
We work with the school system, we work with the community college, we work with William &amp; Mary and all other institutions to try to help them, work with our incubator, accelerator over at William &amp; Mary, to try to expose people to what is available here for them.
Sure.
And part of being a smaller department is having a better reliance on a lot of our local partners to help provide better answers than we could provide and faster service than we can provide. And I think we've done a good job and certainly continue to urge them to communicate what they have available, so we aren't the only one saying it. But I think the word does get out there and consistency ends up winning the day.
Just needs to get out there more often. Yeah.
On, on that note, I will say, we don't have a Buc-Ee's, but we're going to have the world's smallest Wawa opening in.
Oh, good.
James, James, Jamestown District here shortly, probably within the next couple of weeks. Every time I go by, they're putting in landscaping, they've got it paved, I mean, it's just come out of the ground like you wouldn't believe, so I think, I think we're going to have that little small economic engine right there in the middle of the.
My world's best low-fat vanilla latte coffee, anywhere.
And they give free coupons the first week.
Before you step away, just want to also, while we're talking about making sure that high school students and parents know that there's new horizons, that for your high school junior and senior, you can walk out of there with a certification for the trades. If, you know, that's a great opportunity that Thomas Nelson offers for adults, but if you have a high schooler that's interested in the trades, please talk to your high school counselor prior, you know, in your freshman, sophomore year, because it's highly competitive.
Well taken.
Yeah, but thank you, this was a great update.
And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could also, before Mr. Johnson gets away, you know, we talk a lot of times, is it being part of the alliance worthwhile? I believe because of his efforts, the answer is yes. They seek him out, he goes on trips with them, he represents our community, so being connected, he has put a lot of time and effort into being connected and making sure James City County is represented. The state economic development votes, reach out to him on a regular basis, so I think we have a really good person representing us, not only locally with business expansions, but also internationally and nationally. And I've witnessed site visits where we have companies here, whether they came or not, the level of effort and professionalism in selling the community, they do a really great job, and I just want to thank him for those efforts, because it's a lot of time and effort that he's putting into representing this community to ensure that we're getting good quality prospects and projects presenting to James City County, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I've got one thing too, and I, I think you got to remember as well that, just like John had said earlier, that, you know, our industrial sites are kind of hidden, so people may not know about them, and, but they're, they're there for a reason, because the community is asking for certain things. They're trying, we're trying to balance those as well, as far as, so sometimes having a certain store or warehouse or something doesn't fit in our community because it just doesn't fit. And, you know, and Chris has got to sit there and look at, okay, what, what could we get past, what may make it into community, what will fit, and also trying to bring as much as he can into the community. So that kind of is a balancing act as well for the people that think, well, any store will go anywhere, the same thing like a home. Well, you want to sell your home, well, you're going to an apartment. Well, I don't want to be in an apartment, neither does that daggone business either. I mean, it's common sense, but a lot of times people don't apply common sense, and, and five miles riding, five miles to a grocery store up our way, I'm okay with that, they can keep the grocery stores down there, it's a country, and if they want a grocery store, then maybe they need to move somewhere else.
I agree with you.
That's all I got to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You bring up a good point, because often what we see is when somebody new is coming here, we get inevitably, they need to go into all the empty storefronts. Well, they don't, we can't force someone to go into an empty storefront. Plus, it may not work for the fixtures and furnishings of their particular business. They may want a new building, and so you can't force someone to say, oh, well, this store left, you have to go there. It, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way, so.
And it worked real good with our economic development team, as far as when the old outlet mall was falling apart and, and going in shambles and all that, and then Harris Teeter came in there, and now that whole area, if it had stayed like it was and forced somebody to go fit into that building, had to tear the building down and start over in order to make that work. And now it works, it works great. I mean, we even get complaints about how far the grocery stores are away, but I'm glad it is.
Okay, our next presentation is Trash Pickup Service in Grove, Mr. Bob Dittman. Good afternoon.
Members of the board, I'm here to give you a brief update, emphasize the word brief update, on the trash service in Grove and also the convenience center. Quick background, obviously you know, you're aware that in 2020, the county engaged GBB to do a waste consolidation study. At the end of the study, which was in December of 2021, they estimated that the rates would go to about twenty-six to thirty dollars a month. On the twenty-fourth, the Board of Supervisors, April of twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors themselves authorized moving forward with it, which started the five-year notice. So we're approximately three and a half years away from consolidation. Since that time, the three largest HOAs have put their contracts, their trash contracts out to bid, seeing the value of one-hauler servicing the entire area. What we've seen is Colonial Heritage is about thirteen dollars a month, Ford's Colony is fifteen dollars a month for trash. I'm assuming, I do not have the actual number for Kings Mill, so it is probably, seeing how it's twenty-four hundred homes, it's probably in the same vicinity. York County does a subscription-based service, and they are up to approximately eighteen-thousand homes that are participating in it, and they are at twenty-five dollars a month, and this is the final year of that contract. They will be putting it out to bid with a July first start date for the next contract. So what we were asked to look at is an opt-in trash service, because until we reach the five years, we cannot mandate trash consolidation, so we're looking at a subscription service. How can the county start a subscription service? And we looked at the Roberts District first, mainly because of the, the areas down there are, have been classified as, the wrong word will be disadvantaged, but that's what I'm going to say. So what we want to do is try, we're striving to try and get the best experience for the resident, which would be one invoice that would include trash, water, recycling, and then one customer service contract, so that they, people aren't, because people are not having to reach out to multiple locations. And then based on what type of pricing we get back, we would like to include many of the services that the county currently provides at a fee, possibly roll it into that rate. The one thing to keep in mind is the residents will still receive a county tax and a separate sewage bill, so we can get it down from maybe five to three, if we have one system. If the county manages the system, there's a minor ordinance amendment we would have to go through in order to give the county authorization to bill and collect for trash service. And we would then end up with only trash and recycling on one invoice, so we would get rid of one invoice, or we would add trash to the recycling. On a JCSA-managed system, we would be able to include the trash, water, and recycling. That would involve a charter change to expand it to trash service. So our goal is to come back to you in September with some recommendations, taking into account the, the other issues that we're going to have to address, which is going to be staffing issues, customer service issues, how many people, how long it's going to take to implement the billing system, who should manage it, the county or JCSA, and then how to best coordinate the leaf pickup, the bulk pickups, and the recycling. For the RFP, we're looking at probably about ninety days from the date that we either amend the ordinance or we amend the charter, depending on which way we feel is the most efficient use of the county's funds. Then negotiating the contract with a successful bidder, I put, and I know this isn't a popular date, October first is the target date, which the big, the big factor that's going to, that could shorten it is how quickly we could get a billing system up and running and how quickly we can negotiate a contract. So that's probably worst-case scenario. If things go smoothly, we could probably be at the start of the fiscal year of February twenty-seven.
From your lips, too.
Yeah. That's, that would be if everything goes smoothly. So the, I also wanted to give you an update on the Grove Convenience Center. It still looks the same right now, but that's probably going to change by the end of August. Site plan is scheduled for review with planning August fifteenth. Everything is out of the fire station, so it has been prepared for demolition. The two of the three utilities have been terminated. The electric will be done by August first, if not sooner. We have moved the fuel pedestals so that the fire department and police department will still be able to access the fuel tanks, the fuel island down there. The demolition contract's been awarded, they're just waiting for the electric to be terminated, then they can apply for the permits. The biggest hurdle we have left is the execution of an encroachment and an easement agreement with Dominion. If that goes smoothly, then we are looking, I mean, all these things can go on at the same time, so I'm still pretty hopeful that we're looking at a start date for construction of February of twenty-six and grand opening of May of twenty-six. Questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Thanks very much for.
Thanks very much for, for the presentation. I'm glad to see we're, we're roughly on schedule and hopefully the convenience center will meet the schedule that you've laid out and the trash collection will manage to get a little bit earlier. But I had a question about the fact that residents of Grove are on Newport News water. Does that, I mean, that complicates the issue of JCSA billing, doesn't it?
Yes. I'm looking to Doug. And he said, yes.
Doug's definitely.
So, yes, so if we started there, but it would complicate it for Grove, but if the, if, if we're desired to, if it's successful in Grove and we want to continue out of the Roberts District to other districts, then I think that's where the JCSA managed part of it was.
It might make more sense in terms of a pilot program anyway to, to start it out separately from the, the water system. I'm not sure, but, you know, just, just want to make sure that you've got that in your mind about that complication.
Sir. I just like to interject. I mean, folks in Grove do get a sewer bill from the service authority, so.
Okay, okay. But they get that from HRSD though, right?
They get their wastewater collection bill from JCSA.
Right, right. Okay, so, so they still are, everybody in Grove would still be on that?
If they're, if they're a JCSA sewer customer, yes.
And just so it was a board, I ran into something going door-to-door recently. I have a constituent who is on private well, right behind a courthouse over in Brookhaven. But they're on JCSA sewer and HRSD sewer. And without a meter, they're charged a flat rate. And the flat rate, I think Doug, was $15, $14, $15 a month for service authority, $65 a month for HRSD, which I think is coming down now. But it's, I, I had no concept that we had folks in that built-up area that would be not on JCSA water, but on, and that's a, that's a new wrinkle that I'd, I'd never seen before. So there are things we're going to find out, I'm sure, as we go through this that will be unique. The other question I had is that, when you spoke about Grove area, is this pretty much everything from about 199 south? It's a geographic area when you're describing it there.
It would be the, I always can, and as you can tell by my accent, I'm not from here. So I consider it the Grove area and then the James Terrace area. Those, those two areas are, are probably the underserved areas.
Okay.
That, that's who we would want to focus on.
And, and the other question that we, we might want to just keep in mind, and this was a question that rose in my community because we think, we just voted to, our board just voted to go to consolidated trash in Ford's Colony. And our contract is with my current carrier, but.
GFL.
GFL. It was $16 a month for trash and $7 for recycling. So my quarterly, my monthly bill is $23, which compares very favorably to about 40 that I'm paying right now. And they're, they're doing theirs through, with the HOA dues. So the question I came, come up, I think they've got a three-year contract with the fixed rate, so that we're pretty, pretty safe. That's going to come out of the, out of our current recycling base, which will have an impact on our recycling program. But then I guess the question, when the five years is up and we can do a consolidated system, most of those communities, I assume, are expecting to be taken over in a consolidated system through, throughout the, the county.
I don't know that we've had enough conversation with the HOAs to know that they expect us to take it over. I think to Mr. Dittman's point, some of those prices we share with you, we will not be cheaper than $14 a month for garbage collection. When you factor in what York is doing, that 25 a month today for recycling and garbage.
That's just their trash.
Just the trash side. I think that's the range and that's what the GBB study had shown. I do think there are residents in the county that are paying in excess of that 25 to $30 a month, and I think we will be beneficial in those areas. But I think as you get those quantities of numbers and the densities, it becomes more efficient for that one provider versus five or six that we currently have. And the other part of the GBB study that I found interesting when we went through that is the miles traveled are almost 6,000 miles, I think, a week for garbage services today. You reduce that to one provider, it drops down closer to 2,000 miles a week. So I think you get a pretty big reduction in vehicles, traffic trucks on our streets, as well as I believe they're a significant source of our litter along our highways. And so we'll get back to a provider or two that really is responsible for a lot of that and be easier to address some of those issues. So I did want the board to know that pricing is better right now in terms of those economies and those larger neighborhoods. We won't beat that pricing with a consolidated system. I think we can offer more services. I think we can get into the storm debris pickup. I think we can do a lot of the things the board had envisioned, but it has changed a lot in the four or five, well, five years since that study was completed, but I still think it's worth pursuing. And then when we talk about the opt-in, for me, we're really looking Roberts District. That will open up some more customers, maybe provide a little better energy or synergies and efficiencies with a provider. And so unless you feel differently, that is the direction we were headed to bring back a recommendation to you in September. I've harassed Mr. Powell enough that he said whatever works best for our customers, he's willing to do. We've been back and forth of should the county run it, to your point, should JCSA run it? We will have a recommendation for you. My hope is we'll have one call center, one billing. If you want to turn service on or turn it off, you call one place. You're not calling one place for water and one place for garbage so that for the customer experience, it is better. And whether the county does it or general service or JCSA does it, I think we can figure that out, but we'll have that recommendation for you. Unless you have strong feelings, which if you would share that with Mr. Power on the coming, hope through August timeframe, by September, we'll have a recommendation for you. They're still evaluating software systems and which works better, what do we have in place, what might we need, one way or the other, and staffing, but we'll have all that for you in September.
Just to follow up on your question, Chairman Eisenhower, the Ford's Colony contract is for three years with the options come in after that so that if the county's consolidation moves forward, they can just opt out of that contract. And I believe it's.
I, I thought that was part of ours. I'm not sure how it is on the others, but that was what I'd heard.
With the, I think you guys have a, you guys have a 3% cap on your increase per year. Questions?
Right.
Now, I'm just going to use this as an opportunity to say that I pay $40 a month to GFL, but the bigger issue that I have, that I have been going back and forth with Scott and Grace about, is that in my neighborhood, on my streets, are huge puddles of oil after trash is picked up. And I've taken pictures and I've sent them, but unfortunately, I'm not home when the trash gets picked up. So I can't be 100% sure what carrier, and it's not just, it's not about First Colony. It's about wherever that trash truck is going in this county and leaving their debris, which is going into our stormwater and going into our groundwater, is of great concern to me. But I can't stay home in order to catch whoever it is. And so it's very frustrating that that kind of pollution is happening. And so I, that is part, that is one of the many reasons that I feel certain with a different situation, you know, we would have a better handle on something like that. So it's very frustrating to me, but.
Okay, our, our next item is federal cuts and impact on nonprofits. Barbara Watson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here today to, to present a very brief overview about the, I guess, updates on public assistance, but also how they impact our nonprofit agencies. Social Services is responsible for meeting the needs of the underserved communities or underserved families. And that includes seniors and older adults, children and families, housing, and then our benefit programs. We are also challenged with having two sets of responsibilities. We have a responsibility to the county, but we also have responsibility to state DSS. And everything is, is very complex. What we do know is that there are, there, there are inadequacies in Social Services' ability to address the gaps. And it's those nonprofit agencies that help us do that. An example, the programs that Social Services provides are based on eligibility criteria. So as I mentioned, some of those populations, seniors and older adults, families with children up to the age of 17, and then those who are disabled. So that's kind of the criteria. So our Alice population, as you've heard me talk about before, is really ineligible for many of the programs that we provide. So we really rely on our nonprofit communities that can help us in serving those residents that we can't serve. I provided some information to you already that you should have in your packet. But when we look at what's being missed and the information that we're getting from the state, the most information we're getting is really coming about housing and benefits. That seems to be where most of the information. And when we talk about that, these are all, again, tied back to basic needs. So that's food, shelter, and medical care, again, back to the services that Social Services There's a ripple effect. When, when nonprofits are impacted by more people that they might not be getting funding from, the county is always very generous to the nonprofit communities. And again, that is very supportive of the things that we do. But when they get, if, if they're going to be seeing more people, they're going to be more challenged and they will then also have the, they won't be able to have the opportunity to service many people because they're going to be focusing on their own needs. And we've seen one of the results of some levels of funding about, from one of the nonprofits already in, in the community. From our knowledge, when, when families and children and older adults and those who are disabled are experiencing economic difficulties, they're really forced to make some very difficult decisions about their most basic needs. Their well-being is, is impacted. And then from our side of the house, there's a big concern about increased risk for abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Just some highlights of the things, at least from Social Services, and how it would impact James City County residents. You've heard a lot about Medicaid and some changes to that. Primarily, the Medicaid cuts are going to impact those residents who were able to receive Medicaid because of Medicaid expansion. And of those people, we have about 3,500 residents in James City County currently. Initially, the news was that they were going to lose, that population would be losing their Medicaid. That since now is not the case, which I'm, which is very fortunate because that impacts a lot of our families. These are the folks between the ages of 18 and 54. There is a big component now for employment. So these folks in the Medicaid expansion group, in order to keep their Medicaid, they will need to be working or volunteering at least 80 hours a month. And then there will be, they will have to be reevaluated every six months. The challenge for Social Services is that currently, you know, our, our caseworkers are, are caring about 600 cases each, and they have to do one-time evaluation annually. This requirement would cause them now to do it every six months. We do not have the ability to really keep up with that now, but the state Social Services is looking on, looking at that. In the SNAP program, there's a lot of talk about, again, people losing their benefits. This population is called ABOD, another acronym. It's the Able Bodied Adults Without Dependence. We have 1,600 folks in James City County currently that receive SNAP benefits. They will continue to have to be employed in order to keep their benefits. And so this particular change does not really impact Social Services at this point because state Social Services had already required this. Another program, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, very concerned about this particular area. We have about 853 households. And one of the criteria is that there is a person who is at least 60 years old in the home. So this will impact many of the older adults in our community who will be able to have difficulty affording heating and cooling their home. Currently, we are, we still have the ability to take applications for our crisis program, and that'll be cooling for this particular season. So the deadline ends August 15th, but after that, when it comes time for the fall and for fuel assistance, we're not sure what that looks like. When it comes to housing, we currently have 260 vouchers of a variety of types. 80% of the voucher programs go to the elderly, the disabled, and 100% of them include at least one member who is disabled. So this is kind of the, I think, the impact of what we're looking at for folks in need and how, how the continued cuts might impact people in the community and then not just Social Services, but our nonprofit agencies who will probably have increased caseloads. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So are you, when you talk about the Medicaid issue, is that from this, the latest bill that was passed?
Yes.
Okay. So you probably don't know the full impact quite yet.
We do not, and I think that's one of the other challenges that we're faced, is that information is coming down, but there's no implementation of when it's going to start. And so it is kind of a waiting game, but the most reason is that there is that work component for that population of folks receiving Medicaid.
And when you talk about the, something like the low-income home energy, what are you looking at now adding into your budget? You probably, but it would be good when, once you've got the full impact and you have to know how much you're going to take and look at your budget increasing to help people? Because I imagine if we've got 853 households that need help with cooling and fuel and crisis assistance, we're probably going to have to step in and help some of that 853 people and maybe along with others here. So it would, it would be helpful to get a update on how, what you're looking at increasing your budget next year due to these changes. And I'll just say that what I've found, no matter if it's at the federal government or the state government or who's in office, if there's a cut, typically it's just a cut that's going to go down, down.
Right.
Because someone has to pick it up.
Correct.
And most especially when it comes to people who are in need. It's very difficult to not help our most vulnerable citizens. So anyway, that, that would be at some point. And then I would imagine that nonprofits are going to be looking at us more as well. So what, what that means, and I'm not saying that the budget's going to be able to address all those issues. It's just helpful to know what that number would be.
And, and I will just say, follow up with that, is that the light heap funds are state and federal. They kind of come down, and not really to us. We are really the administrators and the. We are really the administrators and do the qualifications, but citizens get it directly. And so, of the last couple of years, it's been approximately three-hundred dollars for this season. So it's not even a lot of money, but there will be additional needs that people will have. We do have a partnership with Dominion, and so, that may look differently going forward. But at this point, you know, we're not sure, we're hoping, I can always be hopeful, I'm optimistic, you know, that we're going to get through the cooling season, and hopefully we'll have, we'll have more knowledge about what the fuel and crisis season will look like when the temperatures are cooler.
Ms. Larson, I guess part of my challenge with funding that's been federal and state is if that goes, and if it's coming out, there's criteria around it, and localities are generally doing that similarly across the state, there's not a real advantage for somebody to move from one locality to another. As those funds become less, and we still have people in need, my sense is if one locality chooses to supplement that, instead of having a hundred people that need it, you're going to have three hundred. Because people will travel to where they're best looked after. And so that's going to be a challenge, I think, for balancing that to meet the needs of our residents here that need assistance, that is currently state and federally provided. If that funding goes away and we continue it, if she gives you a number of half a million, that won't be high enough. Because if our benefit's better than surrounding localities, I believe you'll attract more people that are in need, and that number will continue to grow. And that's a conversation Ms. Watson and I have to have to come back to you as those funds change. But until you know, Ms. McCarthy mentioned with ARPA funding and things that came out, we ended up with the money, but the guidance on how to really do it and spend it came years, a year later, or some significant delay. And so I think all of this stuff you hear about in the news and the legislation, the guidance of what that really means, it takes a while. And all of our organizations, from VACO to other organizations, are trying to figure out what that means for all of us, as well as all of us. But it is going to take some time before we really know that impact. So, we can have, as we have good information, we'll provide those estimates, but they're going to be pretty rough until that guidance, I think, comes out and tells us. Then we have the conversation with you of do we supplement funding that we used to have and we're no longer going to receive, recognizing there may be a risk, or it may just be more funding to nonprofits. And it's, that will be difficult. As those cuts come, there will be either more money from somewhere, or those residents that are in need will be more in need. It's a difficult, I think, situation to be in and have to work through.
I want to thank you, Ms. West, for bringing this information to us. Obviously, a lot of the information is really that we don't know exactly what the impact is going to be. It, you know, it strikes me that when we look at the question, for instance, of work requirements, one of those is how many people in a household who are qualified under expanded Medicaid would be expected to meet that eighty-hour or more, a week, a month requirement? And is it, is it the case that, for instance, you know, most of the people who are under expanded Medicaid are earning more money than people who would otherwise be qualified for Medicaid? And that sort of assumes that they're working.
Some of them, it's a real mix, because some of the folks are working. And then there are others who would fit the category of disabled, and they are not working. And then another challenge with the increase in the number of folks who are going to be required to work is also the daycare.
Yes.
That will need to go along with the folks who now need to find that. So, you know, each, everything is a ripple, and, you know, almost like a domino causes something else. At this particular time, I don't know the number of people per household that the Medicaid work requirement, but it's something that I can look and see if I can find and get for you. But again, of those, how many folks did I say? Of the, yeah, the thirty-five-hundred people, we'd have to do it by age and breakdown? Let's see. In James City County currently, there are nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty households that receive Medicaid. Folks seventeen and under, there are four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine of them, and these are all Medicaid. So basically, it would be part, so it would be the eighteen to fifty-four, about forty-five-hundred people would be in that category. That would be required to do the work requirement at this point.
Yes, so one of the reasons I was interested in having you present some of this information was not just to get a sense of where Social Services is going to be in terms of their funding, but also some of the nonprofits that we have over the years funded, because otherwise, we would be likely to have to meet those needs. I did a tour of the House of Mercy not too long ago, and did so right after they'd received word that they had lost the funding for a federal grant of about eight-hundred-thousand dollars that was allowing them to do a housing trust that addressed homelessness.
Right.
And I think about the food banks across the region that do so much work in meeting basic nutrition needs, and the fact that, in many instances, those are experiencing cutbacks as well. So that, there's a real challenge here, you know, in terms of the ability to call on the resources that have been there to help people navigate their way through some difficult situations.
But we, the three jurisdictions have been meeting as far as addressing some of the homeless needs. And our housing office received funding, one was a trust fund, trust fund funding, and then the other was BRAC funding. So that is going to be able to provide assistance with getting folks in housing. Different, different from House of Mercy, because that was more of a supportive housing unit, but at least these folks will be able to get in housing, and then there are the ability to help with some of the barriers to getting them housed. So this money can help with that. York County has also received some funding to be able to also help. What, so, others are getting funding, even though some has lost, there are others who are still receiving funding. Our biggest challenge that House of Mercy really assisted with was the case management. There's, there really, none of the agencies and none of the jurisdictions really have enough staff to be able to do that case management, to really help those folks with long-term success. And so that's, I think, one of the bigger needs that I think all of us, and I'm going to say all jurisdictions, will need to look at if we are going to help support people, helping them continue to be successful in, you know, in becoming rehoused and staying housed.
I hope we've been able to kind of keep a sense of where things stand with the nonprofit sectors that we rely on so much, so that as time goes on, we can, you know, have a better sense of where the gaps are that absolutely need to be addressed. I mean, we just had a discussion about economic development. Economic development's going to depend on us having workers available, and in many cases, service workers in low-paying jobs. And so, you know, if people are leaving the community in order to, you know, have a less expensive life, cost of living someplace, or like, you know, that may mean it'll be more difficult for our businesses to be able to find people to employ, and to meet important needs in the healthcare industry, and tourism, and all sorts of aspects of the community. So, I'll just stop there.
Watson, thank you. Thank you for bringing this together. I think in watching it, and I was wondering when it came, how much information you'd be able to have, because there's so many unknowns. And I think it's going to be a year before we actually know if this is affecting anything or if it's not. I would agree with the county administrator that, you know, if we dive in and start going, well, we need to fill these holes that we don't know if we have, or we may have, or we could have, then we're creating, you know, more issues, I feel, in the long run. We want to take care of everybody, make sure everybody has what they need, and those who don't, I don't see any, anything wrong with if you're receiving something, going to work. And that's just my upbringing, just the way we were brought up. And I understand the ones that can't, well, you can't expect them to work. I mean, if you can't walk, and you can't get around, and there's no way you can work, and, you know, and that's why society is how it is, because we've got that net to catch those people and hopefully help them, and, you know, because all of us could be that way in a very short amount of time. So, but I think our biggest thing is, is we're going to have to, it's going to have to be a collection of information over the next year of this is going on and that's going on. And it may take our nonprofits, and our nonprofits may start coming together, and, you know, may not be ten or twelve nonprofits. They may find, if we come together and join forces, we can get more done with less nonprofits because three of them have joined together as one, and are helping in a greater, you know. So I think, you know, it's kind of tough for you to go, guys, I wish I had my crystal ball today to tell you which way we're going, but I do appreciate you coming, trying to explain some of this to us, and helping us go through this. And I know it's, you know, tough for you because you care so much about everybody else, and want to, you know, make sure that you give them as much as you can give them, and help them along as they try to get out of some of the situations they're in. And some may not ever get out of it, just because the way life is. And, but your help and your guidance and your team, thank you for all you do, for the community and for James City County. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
I'll keep you posted.
Next is seven-five-seven Swim Aquatic Facility Funding Request, Locker Room Renovation. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I included the seven-five-seven Swims letter requesting fifty thousand dollars from the county to improve their locker rooms and shower facilities in your agenda package. Since their purchase of the swimming facility in 2021, they've invested substantially in maintenance and operating costs, and have supported county use of their facility, as detailed in their lease. Their locker rooms and showers cannot be used due to improper grading and floor drainage, and has created some issues within their facilities and hosting events and servicing our swim teams and public safety officials or staff that are using that. They approached us several years ago and asked, and submitted a CIP request for the county to consider to expand their locker rooms, at a cost of over a million dollars. And I just was, I did not recommend that in your FY26 budget, it just seemed a lot for us to get there. They had to submit in this letter a revised request, asking for fifty thousand dollars from the county to renovate and approve the drainage issue in their locker rooms at an estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars. So they've asked for half of that cost to fix their existing locker rooms rather than expand them, and asked that we help with that. You know, we have many organizations that provide outstanding services in the community, and I always struggle when one asks for money and we fund it, and another asks for money and we do not. Making those choices is very difficult. In this case, our Parks and Recreation Director and I are comfortable at least recommending or supporting their request for fifty thousand dollars, as I do believe they provide swimming facilities that our high school teams and public safety personnel use on a regular basis. And if they weren't there, our cost to provide those facilities for our high schools and our public safety officials, I believe, would come at a much higher cost than the partnership we have with seven-five-seven Swim. Additionally, in their time of shutting down our recreation center's pool while we're doing our renovation through November, they have allowed our recreation center members limited access to their pool at a very reasonable cost to us while our pool is closed for the renovation. I don't have much more in terms of the argument. I do think we are not meeting the swimming needs in our community, and they help by having the swimming facility that is at least addressing some of that need in the community. And while I wasn't supportive of a million-dollar request to expand their locker rooms, I do think the fifty thousand dollar request is a much more reasonable approach to maintaining a facility that's meeting a lot of that need, and that our high school students are using, or swimmers are using, and our public safety personnel are using as well. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try to address that. We do have funding if you would be supportive, and the contingency fund, that we could support that of fifty thousand dollars, so it's not an additional allocation, but it is something that I think is a need that's out there that will help community swimmers.
I'd be in favor.
I would just add that I think for me, the, because this all came up, I believe, when I was chair, and we went out there, and for me, the fact that our high schoolers are not currently able, no one uses their locker rooms currently, including our high school swim teams. They also, and part of the lease, they signed the lease, they, however, they are absorbing the cost for our high school swimmers to swim there, War Hill and Jamestown, the, during the, which I believe runs November to probably January, February or so. So for me, the, if they can get these locker rooms fixed, and then get our high schoolers back in there, so that they don't have to go there, go home, change, go to high school, you know, it's enough having young people on the road very early. So I do think it's a worthwhile investment. And it's not a million dollars. So, do you, do you need a motion, or?
Need a motion?
Unless there's real objection, I just wanted to have the conversation and make sure that we had some discussion about that, if there were concerns with doing it, or hesitation to doing it. At this point, if the majority of you are okay with moving forward, I will move forward. I don't believe that I need any motion. I can authorize that fifty thousand dollars from contingency. We'll work on an agreement so that we're sure we get the renovations completed before we've just sent money that doesn't get spent in the right fashion. So we'll have that between the county attorney and I to ensure that. Thank you.
And last, the Perennial Government Center update.
Were you here last month?
The best for last. I was here last month.
Okay, just checking. The month before that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Good to see you again.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Stevens, and Mr. Kinsman. I am here to give you my monthly update on the new Government Center. Just yesterday, we received the design drawings to one-hundred percent. We are, although I think Mr. Holt already left, but I think he spent all last night going through the four-hundred-and-thirty-two-page document. The staff's going to be looking at those over the next few weeks. They are scheduled to start construction drawings either late August or early September. Plan right now is that one-hundred percent construction documents will be done in February of March of twenty-six. We did hold our two library input meetings two weeks ago. Total, we had about a hundred-and-thirty-five people or so attend those events at the rec center. Couple of board members were there, appreciate that. A lot of really great input. A lot of folks were there who were very pleased to see the library possibly going there. Certainly, we had some who weren't so supportive, but vast majority of people that were there were very supportive of the additional library and being at that location. Had a stakeholder group meeting last week, if you recall. Last year, we formed a stakeholder group of a variety of people throughout our community to kind of present plans to them and get ideas from them, just as another group to appeal to, and another group to be out there talking about it in the community. Held that meeting last week, and that went well. Ms. Towers was there and talked a lot about the library, that was kind of the focus of that meeting, but that went well. We are planning for public information sessions on the Government Center on August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Those will be held at Legacy Hall. The one on the twenty-sixth, I believe, is going to be at two P.M. The one on the twenty-seventh is going to be at six P.M. Just another opportunity for folks to come in and kind of see where we are with the Government Center. This isn't necessarily an input session, because we've kind of gotten beyond the stage of giving that type of input on the design, more of an information sharing, where we can show the renderings and where we are at this point, so folks can come out and see that on those days. I am still planning to bring the early site work package to you all at your September board meeting. That package would allow them to start site work on the lot, possibly as early as October. We're working through some issues with some Dominion power that's running through that site right now, but that's the current plan and the schedule that we're on. I know there's, I know Ms. Larson has a town hall meeting coming up to talk about it, and we'll have those two input sessions, but that is the plan. So if you have any questions... questions of me about that, uh, I know y'all don't meet in August, uh, but we will be getting an updated price sometime in August. I don't anticipate it changing much from what it is currently, uh, but we'll be certainly reaching out and talking to that, and we can certainly schedule some individual meetings to discuss some of those issues, and any concerns that you might have. Another issue just came up, and I'm bringing this up because uh, someone reached out to someone at a meeting, I think it was one of the library folks, asked me about it, uh, skate park. So as you know, the skate park is currently at the site where the proposed government center would go. If the board does approve that early site work package, once site work starts on the site, the skate park will be closed. Uh, they are having some public input meetings in September and October for the new design of the skate park, and they do intend to start construction on that over at the War Hill Sports Complex area, uh, in the spring of next year. That's really all I have for an update. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The, uh, you, you say we should get the updated price, um, in, in late August?
In, sometime in August. I'm hoping mid-August, I'll have that.
Okay, and, um, how does that translate? Are we looking, or we expect, uh, with that, is that the final, the final price, or is that, when will the final contract, uh, um, for doing that, uh, project, uh, and, you know, the fixed price contract? When do you expect that?
That's a great question. You know, the, the actual final price won't, won't probably be given to us until we're done with those construction documents, uh, which will be in February, March of twenty-six. But we will have a updated price. Uh, you know, and I've had that question posed to me, and I know it's gonna be challenging to present this to you all, to start site work without having a definitive price of exactly what it's going to cost. Uh, it certainly will be in that ballpark of the cost that they're gonna give us now. Uh, and, you know, I think my response to that is if the price comes in, it's something you don't like, then we put it out to bid, uh, and get prices from others, if, if the price isn't told true to where we've been this whole time, because the price really hasn't changed much, uh, since last year, when they proposed that last updated price. And if it does come in substantially higher, if there's an issue, you know, you have an out. Uh, we have the design drawings, we'll have the construction drawings, we take all those drawings, and we ask for other bids, uh, if the price that we get back isn't something that you all are comfortable with.
So Brad, when you have these open houses on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, where did you say that?
They're at Legacy Hall.
Legacy Hall. Are you gonna do a presentation like you did for the library?
It'll be just like it was for the library. It won't be a-
Well, I think that's perfect, and then somebody at each picture.
Correct. There'll be stations with, with-
Okay.
Folks there to answer questions.
Cool. Okay, that's-
Berkeley meeting is September fourth at six PM, Legacy Hall.
Just trying to, one thing on the price. What I, what we, or at least, we have been pushing on the contractors, to give us a price that it won't go above, uh, so that if you award the site work this price, it would not exceed. They still have some contingency numbers built into that number, so my expectation would be, we have a price that it won't exceed, that we have contingencies, that as they get closer and refine their actual cost, your price could go down. Yeah, I, I do think it's unfair to the board to ask you to embark on a project of this magnitude without having a cap. So whether that cap is this number, it will be, I think we will have a number for you, or I'm not terribly comfortable recommending you proceed till we have that number. And like I said, it could be that number or less. I'd be okay with less, but I don't want it to be more. So I think we have to, we owe it to you to get you a number that it will not exceed, and as they refine their final estimates, and get their final pricing based on, uh, the construction documents, that when you come to the February timeframe, it wouldn't be more, it could be less. So that's at least the direction we were headed.
Yeah, that, that guaranteed maximum price, we will have that. We, we will have that for you. I just, I'm not certain what that number's gonna be.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Ruth, what, uh, September fourth, at Legacy Hall for yours, what, what time?
Six PM.
Six PM. Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay.
Jim, can we take five minutes?
Uh, we can. We will take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Let's back to order. We'll get the TV on here in a second. All right, there we go. All right, we are now down to Board Considerations. Our first is CIP Financing and Reimbursement Resolution. Sharon McCarthy, Staff Position.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Board. At the beginning of each fiscal year that the county intends to borrow funds for capital projects, we start working with our financial advisor, Davenport, to develop a financing plan. We have started that process, and Davenport is working on various options to present to you to consider. We anticipate that Davenport will be presenting those options to you in the early fall timeframe. We are monitoring the market and the projects we intend to finance with bond proceeds, and the actual timing of the borrowing will coincide with the cash flow projection needs of those projects, meaning we don't want to borrow too soon and we don't want to wait too long. The first step in the process is to have a reimbursement resolution in place so that the county can be reimbursed for any cash outflows between now and when that actual borrowing does occur. The material you have before you provides that authorization, and staff recommends its approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Ms. McCarthy?
Think we've done this traditionally with every, every year?
It's very routine.
Cycle.
So no questions?
I'll move the resolution.
We have a movement of the resolution. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. And number two is purchase of property located at 6693 Richmond Road. John Kornefax to give staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. You have a memo on resolution before you for the purchase of a piece of property at 6693 Richmond Road for a future fire station. As you know, in the FY '30 budget that was planning purposes, the design of a new fire station is allocated at that time. So we started looking at some property. As we discussed at a previous meeting, we looked at four different sites, and we believe this is the best site in this location for the board to consider purchasing. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Well, I think it's great. As I told you before, love the location.
Yes.
Good work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you need to resume? I'll move the resolution.
We have a, you move the resolution? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
And I will give a shout out to Mr. Kornefax. He doesn't normally dress that way.
You know, I almost commented.
But he looks really good today, so I just wanted to thank him for that.
I almost said something when he came to the podium about how sharp he was looking.
Falling back into old habits.
Yeah. Didn't wear his polo, James City County polo.
Okay. We, at this point, I will request a motion to amend the board's meeting calendar to add a special meeting on July 29 at 5:30 PM with members of the James City County School Board to be held in the Work Session Room at 101F Mounts Bay Road, Williamsburg, Virginia.
I will move that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Board Requests and Directives, starting to my far right.
Had a TPO and PDC meeting. Everything went fine. Life is good in the regional area, so James City County is well represented.
Thank you.
Done. See, it can be quick as we.
That was good. That was good. So I attended the NACO convention with Ms. Larson and Mr. Purse and Mr. Reinheimer. We had a good time. It was interesting. I didn't, I was, thought they were a little bit short on, yeah, just strengths to talk about. No, really, there were not a lot of things that I thought were really interesting. I mean, Ruth did a presentation on the 250, and I went to another one, and I can't remember what it was, but it was interesting, and we had a, we had a good time, but it just, like when we went to Tampa last year, it was so, you had to make a decision which you were going to because there was so much. So it was a little bit. And I went to the library display, and I thought that was really nice, and there was people in there. I think it's great to have all the pictures up and so forth, I think, so people can, because people can't visualize without pictures. And that's about all that's gone on. Thank you.
So I went to NACO as well, and I found lots of great workshops to go to. But we did make a presentation on the 250th that I thought I was very nervous about. I appreciate the support from my colleagues, and we got feedback that people really enjoyed it. So that was, that was good. And more on that coming, but that, that is starting to ramp up. So I'm, I'm hoping that we're really gonna stay engaged and do big things. So appreciate the opportunity to go to NACO, and wanted to comment on our consent calendar, again, just how much I appreciate the, the initiative to go out and get the grant funding for so many really worthwhile things. When you're looking at things for law enforcement, for domestic violence, for school security, witness assistance, I mean, there's just, there's just a lot of, a lot of good things that, that staff is doing, and employees in James City County are doing child health initiatives. So I just appreciate that. The one thing that I hope that we can talk about at a, at a future meeting is landscaping requirements. I agree, I think that there is a lot about the beauty in this county, and we do a really good job of buffering, but I want to make sure that it's appropriate and it's not over, it's not too much, and that we're asking of certain areas in our county. Sometimes, you know, people will come and talk, you know, frustration, they've been required to do, you know, 100-plus plants and shrubs and, which is really tough. And just making sure that, yes, this is why we do it, this is why it's necessary, but I would, I would be interested in hearing about that at a future meeting if we could. There is a lot of paving going on, and, which I'm appreciative of. Route 5 was getting paved, and, but I did have to reach out to Mr. Purse because there was a sign that said bump, and I said, Jason, this is more like a cavern. And VDOT did come out, and they did address it before the triathlon that happened over the weekend, which I appreciate. Thank you, Mr. Purse, for helping with that. But I just, they're just part, just I hope we're encouraging VDOT that when we do have paving going on, that we are making sure that when we say bump, we mean mump. We don't mean a huge drop in damaging to my car in particular. But anyway, those are the, those are the big things coming on, just because we will not meet in August. We will meet one other time, but we won't have public comment. September 4, 6 o'clock, Legacy Hall, Berkeley Town Hall. I'm sure we'll have others from other districts, but we encourage Berkeley residents to come out. We'll have an update on the Government Center and other things to be determined as I work with Mr. Stevens. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing about the landscaping? Has come to me too, and Ruth and I have discussed this with people that are doing something, and it's off the road, and it's not on a community character road, and all of this, and they're, they're looking at me and saying, they're asking for 300 bushes. I think that's outrageous, and I think we, we do need to kind of revise what looks good and why we have to have so many. We discussed that when I was on the Planning Commission with the Wawa, because they needed eight feet open, and everybody was pushing and saying, we have to have these trees there and trees there. And I said, why? Why, why can't you put them there? And they said, because all the utilities run there. Well, that makes sense. So I think we have to come to a more logical thing. What looks nice? I don't think 300 trees is something that we should be requiring on rural roads, not, you know, not view from the roads, from the people, you know, just something nice and attractive, but not so close together. Your street trees, the street tree ordinance, 70 feet apart. Well, that would be nice, but the landscape group puts 70 feet apart, and then they put a shrub, and then a five footer, and then another shrub, and that kind of stuff, and it's really getting to be very hard on some of the developers and the, and the residents and people in their businesses. So I think we have to look at something where we can make it a little more, a little, a little more open-minded to the aesthetic instead of the numbers, in my opinion.
Happy to bring that back as a discussion item, and at least talk about where we are and why we're there and what, what changes we want to make going forward.
Yeah. I think an understanding on my part.
Yeah.
I think I already mentioned that I attended the ribbon cutting for Oceans and Ales. I also, in addition to going to the Monday session on the library, I went to drop in on the Wednesday session as well after our last meeting, and found the public comments to be very interesting and good and supportive of good library space, and was glad to see that pop up on one of our presentations today, that the library is a priority, a priority item, showed very clearly once again. And finally, I just want to mention that if you're looking to kind of take advantage of this frigid weather out here today compared to what we've been experiencing recently, be a good opportunity on Thursday to go support the Habitat for Humanities Restore location, where they're partnering with the Grove Christian Outreach Center for a food drive called SLEIGH.
That last year, yeah.
Yes. Their goal is to raise 10,000 pounds of food items, non-perishable items, you know, which tend to weigh more, anyway, cans of vegetables, meat products, other things. Between 9 o'clock in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon, you can just drive into the parking lot there and drop off a bag or two of, of food that would be available for folks in the outreach of Grove Christian Outreach Center. So I just mentioned that this coming Thursday.
This Thursday.
I had the opportunity on July the 15th to go over and go through the old Community Services Building, which is now the CDR Building, and they are really making progress. They have big addition out on the front lawn of that, and the, we got tour through the inside with the hard hat, and it was, it's, it's gonna be a phenomenal building when they, when they get it, get it done there. I did participate in a telephone conference with Katie Boyle from VACO, because I'm chairing the Finance Committee this year, and we're gonna probably have a pretty intensive meeting when we go up in August, the 14th of August for our VACO Day. My Finance Committee meeting is late in the day, but they're still wrestling with what they're getting is input from the two subcommittees of the General Assembly, one from the Senate and one from the House, on impact of federal money on programs in the, in the state. And so there were a couple of things that I think that came along that were of interest, and I will, I will share some with, with the board members. I think, if I can remember correctly, correctly, one of them was, I've, I've, I've got a whole list. I'd rather than go into the details, I'll, I'll send you the, the details of what we were looking at, and we can look at our agenda from last year and what proposed agenda changes, so you can give me your input before we go to this meeting on the 14th, where we're gonna sort of formalize the initial cut at the agenda before we get to November. And then lastly, next Monday is Mayors and Chairs. So, and I think we're going to York County, if I remember correctly. So we will see what comes up on a regional basis, and that's pretty much what I have today. We will look to Scott, where the reports of the County Administrator.
Chairman, Members of the Board, not a whole lot to share. I will say I'm glad to be back. Thanks for the time away, and I'm delighted to be back. I will tell you, the HTRFA, we have been looking to hire a part-time executive director. We have a finalist and somebody that we're about ready to announce. I'm excited that we will have an employee, a part-time employee that works for the board to sort of keep us all informed and be the face of the HTRFA. So that is coming, and I'll share that information with you as soon as that's available to be released publicly. And then finally, I just would remind people, it is hurricane season. It comes up on us, August and September tend to be the busier months for us, and we just continue to remind our residents to be prepared to take care of their family, their pets, their medications for a period of three to seven days. And so as those things come, our emergency management folks are watching and talking, and will promote it more, but it's certainly easier to get ready today when it's not frantic as opposed to two or three days ahead of time. So we just encourage people to be vigilant. So that's all I had.
All right. I will, I may have a motion to enter closed session for the following items. One is consideration of a personal matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and or commissions pursuant to section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, that's appointments to the Virginia Peninsula Community College Board and appointments to the Clean County Commission. And number two, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.23711A29 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract for the joint operation of schools between the county and the city of Williamsburg.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, please call the rolls.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Okay, we're closed session.
Concession, and I will look for a motion to certify.
Chairman, a move to certify that we only spoke about those items we said we'd speak about going into closed session.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, call the roll. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlenn?
Aye.
Ms. Dryson?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Okay.
Chair, I have two, or actually three people, but two boards. One, Mr. Charles Louderman, we would like to reappoint him onto the Clean County Commission, and also Ms. Peg Borman. And I apologize, their terms expire July 31, 2025. I'm not sure when they're new.
I think it's a three-year, isn't it?
A three-year term onto the Clean County. And then can I do the other one at the same time? All right. And then we'd like to appoint Doug Powell to the Virginia Peninsula Community College for a term that begins July 1, 2025. So he's going to have to go and pretend like he served for the last 21 days. And that will expire on June 30 for 2029.
Stevens, we have a rule. A motion, please, call the roll. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlenn?
Aye.
Ms. Dryson?
Aye.
Okay. And I'll take a motion to adjourn until 5:30 p.m. on July 29, 2025 for a special meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Stevens? Aye. Mr. Hippel? Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. McGlenn?
Aye.
Ms. Dryson?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned.